Good evening. Welcome to the September 10, 2012 meeting of the St. Charles County Council. To begin with, would you please rise for the invocation led by John Tisher of Harvester Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by John White. Please rise.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for a beautiful day today. We thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. And here it is, September 10. We also remember that 11 years ago, the tragedy that happened to our nation. Father, we pray for the people that were affected. Pray for the families that are still dealing with their loss. Pray for our nation as we still continue to deal with the effects of that day. And Father, we pray for today. We pray for this council, the men and women that are serving, that you might give them wisdom and give them the creativity to think through the various decisions that are at hand. We pray tonight for good communication, that the various decisions that will be made, Father, that they will be made in a wise manner. And we pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the people of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, undebowed and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please? Councilmember Joe Cronin, Councilmember Joe Brazel, Councilmember Nancy Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Nguyen.
Listen by phone.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Jerry Darty.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
We have a quorum, barely. First item on the agenda is public comments. And before we open to public comments, once we start a subject, we stay on that subject until everyone has been allowed to speak. Three on each side of that topic, three for, three against, alternating. Once we've exhausted that topic with six speakers, then we can go on to the next topic. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes, that you are civil. We don't like personal attacks on any person, or any office holder, or any citizen. So please be civil. That being said, is there anyone that would like to speak this evening? When you come forward, please state your name and address. Yes, sir.
My name is Kevin Dalton. I'm from 731 Highway W. I was here at the last meeting, which I'm glad that this board was on my side about the cell towers. I don't see Mr. Ellis here. I was wanting to make sure that we did have our reasons of denial recorded. Does anybody on this board know if that did happen?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda for findings of fact.
Okay. And then, just, I'm not going to spend much time, but I just want this board to know, I was really involved with this situation because it was in my backyard. I talked to hundreds of people. There's people in the same area that had the same problem I had, where a cell tower company came in and wanted to put up a tower on an unacceptable lot. I think the St. Charles Tower knows what they're doing. I think they're trying to sneak towers up wherever they can get them. Citizens like me and several other citizens I've talked to have paid out thousands of dollars to attorneys to fight these tower companies, and they're trying to jump through loopholes anyway. They don't have a... They're not filling out their applications, and they're not picking good lots to put these towers on. And I think that's very unfair, that the citizens have to pick up the end and pay, you know, to get something turned on that shouldn't be going on in the first place. I know this council is very busy. Me and a majority of people I talk to really would encourage St. Charles County to rewrite some of these ordinances, maybe tighten up a little, get a little bit more familiar with FCC rules and regulations on cell towers. I think that would cause a lot of, get rid of a lot of headaches and a lot of stress going on in the community. So I just want to let the board know that. And I think the board, everybody here, has a way to contact me. I do have a really good attorney out of New York City. All he does is specialize in cell towers throughout the United States. For $5,500, he'll rewrite all of our rules and regulations, and he'll be a phone call away every time a tower company wants to put up a tower. So I want to pass that on to this board, and hopefully they consider that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening to talk about cell towers? To talk about any other topic? Yes, ma'am.
On Highway N.
Please come forward.
Can you see that?
It will show up in a moment.
It'll show? Okay.
The control room is looking at it now.
All right. Hello, and thank you for your service. My name is Chrissy Holmes, and I'm a resident of O'Fallon. I'm speaking on behalf of Shoulders for Safety Phase Two, which is... It's a grassroots effort of parents and citizens we formed in August of 2011. We're concerned with the number of accidents and injuries on Highway N, specifically from Summers Road to Highway Z. We've collected over 1,000 signatures on a petition who want real improvements, including shoulders to Highway N. I just want to share a little bit of the topography of Highway N with you, for those that are unfamiliar with it. It's a narrow, two-lane road. With no shoulders or guardrails. Portions of the roads with S-turn and limited sight distance. Uneven pavement. An increased traffic in the fastest-growing city and school district in the state with no upgrades to this road whatsoever. I'd also want to share some facts with you that's been given to us by the Missouri State Highway Patrol. You can do the next turn. The average number of accidents on this stretch of road has increased 485% since 2001. Average number of injuries on this road has increased 420%. I'm sorry, go to the next one. I didn't have those laid out for you. And a couple other stats. The Wentzville School District has been the fastest-growing over the past decade in both numbers and percentage growth, and a big part of that came from the city of Wentzville, which grew by 322%, which is the largest increase of any city in the state. The third-fastest-growing city was 162%, which is Darting Prairie. All of that feeds to Wentzville School District. The five communities that are either in the Wentzville School District are Wentzville, Lake St. Louis, O'Fallon, Forestale, and Darting Prairie, and all five are in the top 50 fastest-growing communities out of 637 in the state. We feel the accidents and injuries are even greater on Highway N, as we know that there are some that are not included on this accident data. Julie Stone, 17, was killed on her way to school on Highway N on December 5, 2002. There's even a cross on the side of the road. This information is not included in any of the Missouri State Highway Patrol data. You know, how many more have happened, how many more have occurred that we're unaware of? Seems like the more exposure we've received, more people are telling us about fatalities and accidents, and when we look back at the data, it's not there. Since all accidents and fatalities are not being recorded properly, Highway N's data is being skewed. This road keeps getting overlooked for improvements.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak opposed to improvements to Highway N? Is there anyone else to speak in favor of improvements?
Yes, please. Yes. My name is Pat Hacker, and I'm a parent in the Wentzville School District. I have been for 18 years. I am also vice president of the Wentzville School Board, and I am also a tennis coach at Timberland High School, which is on Highway N, part of our south campus. I would like to show you that not only do we have an increased enrollment of the fastest school district in the state, we also have adjoining churches with schools. St. Gianna is new this fall, which has just opened a school. We have Emmanuel Lutheran, which has a school on Highway N directly across from our south campus of the Wentzville School District. We have numerous churches, Hopewell Baptist, Wentzville Church of God. We have a very dangerous situation in that we have an old country road that does not support, by any means, the traffic on Highway N for any churches and schools in increased growth in this area. This is a very sad situation, when we have Highway Z and N, two very well-traveled roads that are confusing, many accidents. I dread the day that a school bus will be in one of these accidents. We have no shoulders on Highway N. You can see that we have drainage ditch problems. School buses are very afraid to drive on this highway. There are numerous blind curves, and we have a situation near Hopewell Baptist Church where we have Dwello Road and Hopewell Road making a junction in Highway N, blind. It's all blind. So my hope is that our St. Charles City Council, or County Council, can be aware, just take a drive down Highway N. It's alarming, and I would like to make you well-aware of the safety factor involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker in favor of shoulders on or improvements to Highway N?
Hi, I'm Ross Collins, and my family and I have lived out on Highway N for the past eight years. And our driveway intersects Highway N about one mile east of T, so it's out in the real bad area. For a number of years now, we've been watching semi trucks go by, wondering why, until we realized that they're going around the weight station. We've called the authorities many times. Nothing has happened with that. And I've had the MoDOT out many times to look at a ditch in front of my house where there's been two accidents already. And it's a very deep ditch. The shoulders are nonexistent, and the pavement is very much higher than the ground that's under it that is... It's very slanted there. And we have five grandchildren out there that have learned to drive on Highway N. We warned them, we cautioned them, and, you know, what can you do? If you look down to tune the radio and the wheel drops off, you overcorrect and you're off in the ditch on the other side very quickly. About two or three years ago, we noticed that it looked like the shoulders were being worked on. It looked like they were being widened, and I thought, that is going to be great. To find out, all they put there was some loose asphalt and rock, and if you drop a wheel off, it's even worse than it was before, because it just sinks into that. And then when they mow along there, it throws that rock up on the pavement, and it makes for more accidents. Motorcycles or whatever hit it, they're going to be gone. We note that it's continued to deteriorate over the years. It's just getting worse and worse. And we noticed that, like Oberheman Road, and even Morrison Lane and Forestale Road are all better roads than Highway N. They're improved more often, and they're just better roads. They're not quite as wide, they don't have the white stripes along them, but they don't have all these big ditches and stuff in the road. I've seen personally at least 20 cars off in ditches on Highway N since I've lived there. And four, or five of them, I think it's five now, have been either touching our property or within where we can see them, have gone off that road. And Jakes Creek borders the west end of our property, and there were two accidents there in the last four years. And they started putting up guardrails, and right in the middle of putting them up, they just stopped. And they've had orange barrels sitting there, and nothing else has been done. It's just frustrating. And a few weeks ago, I was kind of excited about, not quite yet, I was kind of excited to see that there were signs going up that... Am I finished?
Your time is up. Is there a motion to give this gentleman? Two more minutes?
I need another minute or so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead and continue.
Anyway, I noticed that they were doing some things. They had one-way signs and that, and I thought, well, they're going to finally do some paving. Come to find out, all they were doing was striping the road. And then now, they are paving sporadically right over the new paint, which doesn't make any sense to me. In conclusion, I would just like to say that on May 24, our 17-year-old grandson was one of the shoulder accidents and caused his car to roll. And that's John. He was on his way to volleyball practice and soccer practice, I'm sorry. And miraculously, he had many head, much head trauma from the rollover, but he's okay now. We're just real lucky with that. But unfortunately, our granddaughter Emily, which is 16, on July 16, wasn't as fortunate. And she was fatally injured about 300 yards from our house. She came around a curve that she was going too fast, but there's a big ditch like in the road. I don't know what to call this, whale, where the trailer trucks come through there all the time, and when she hit that, she just went to the other side and off the road. Anyway, I guess I just wonder, can you help us make this road safer? I also wonder how many kids, how many more kids are going to have to be hurt, maimed for life or dead because of this road? Thank you very much for hearing me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know it would be out of order at this time, but is it possible to have Craig Tokowski come up and speak to any planned improvements to this route?
Well, could I speak to it first?
Yes.
Yeah, Craig can supplement what I have to say. Obviously, I know all the SOS people understand that it is a, N is a state highway. And I appreciate the suggestion that Forestale Road and others, that Craig does have jurisdiction over, are much better. But this is a state highway. We continue, the administration continues to be willing to work with the SOS people to try to get MoDOT to improve the safety out there. I agree with everything that's been said, except I would say what we really need is a four-lane road with good shoulders. And I can assure you that since I've been here, which is now almost 10 years, we have been talking to MoDOT every year about Highway N. It is a very high priority. You know, it's just, they're all, I know the SOS people are very aware of the financial situation MoDOT has, but I encourage you to continue your effort with them like you have before, and let us know what we can do to help. We can't fix it all ourselves, but we can certainly work with you and try to help you along. If Craig has anything to add, he can certainly do that.
I think the county executive summed up, you know, the facts pretty well. I mean, I can supplement it by saying we have about 750 miles of our own roadways to maintain, and not much money to do it. Obviously, MoDOT draws from a much larger pot of money than we could ever dream of doing, and, you know, we have our hands full just keeping our own roads up to standard. You know, there's possibly other funding sources that could be looked at, but we're pretty tapped.
It seems to me that the previous SOS Group One had some success, and that we helped make their case to the state. Is that true?
That is true, and I believe those funds came from the half-cent sales tax. See, that's a different pot of money than what we're able to use. We have to compete for that, just like the cities do. Our basic maintenance budget, road and bridge tax money, is really used just to maintain our 750 miles. We can't really even do improvements with that. We have to go to the road board to get funds to do that ourselves.
But we can talk later about what we can do to help plead their case to the, to MoDOT, right?
Absolutely, sure.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on any other topic this evening?
Do we get, I thought she said we get six people to speak, or?
Actually, it's just three on each side. Do you have?
There is one.
More information that's substantial, substantially different from what's already been said?
Sure.
Because I think you know we're on your side, but if you have something to add, please do.
I was contacted, Ms. Holmes, I work for the Wentzville Fire Protection District, and the chief asked me to gather some data for her relative to her request of, hey, what's the accident? What challenges are we facing as an organization out there? We cover the whole area that everybody spoke about tonight. So first, I got her some data, gave her the information, she got back to me right away and said, hey, this doesn't match the Highway Patrol, it doesn't match Sheriff Sparman, and other entities in play. You have O'Fallon, Lake St. Louis, Wentzville, and St. Charles County, the four cities and counties that touch all the real estate we're talking about. I then got into some conversation about the challenges we face, because that is a main arterial point that we move our fire trucks through for calls. I also started relating some personal experience to myself and other firemen, that what's unique about Highway N is we've never really worked accidents on the highway, because all the vehicles are off the highway, versus a lot of times accidents, two vehicles strike there on the highway, a lot more, less damage, if you will. So a unique characteristic of that highway is that most of the vehicles, and we can get you the data, never stay on the roadway when there is an accident, so that further causes harm to the people, the occupants and property. I can tell you that we have trouble driving the fire trucks down the road, and I can tell you, having friends and being in law enforcement prior to this, the reason you don't have the response out there, there's nowhere for the police to stop them. There really is, there's nothing they can do. I mean, there's very few drives in the area in question, so there's a problem with the enforcement side, because they're not, they don't have the tools to do their job. We're having trouble, we're having to sweep cars off the side of the roadway just to get from calls from point A to point B. So any improvements you can make, the fire department, I'm speaking on behalf of the chief, that he will do whatever's necessary to help. We work with the schools. I also have children that go to school out there, so I'm vested in on both sides. So if there's anything you can do to point the people or provide the right assistance to get the people, most of these people, including myself, are laypeople, get us into the right conversations with the right people, we'll do the work if you can help us, and great. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, councilmembers. My name is Troy Strumming. I'm senior vice president of Government Relations and Public Affairs for Ameristar Casinos, and here tonight to speak to you on behalf of Ameristar Casino St. Charles. And in opposition to Resolution 3884, which I believe is before you this evening, we believe that 3884 is an attempt to correct fatal flaws that were part of Resolution 3881, which has been previously voted on by you, signed by the county executive, and submitted to the county election authority. We believe 3881 was confusing on its face and to the voters, and we now believe that Councilman Cronin's proposal is just further layering more confusing language on that bill, which we think is ultimately going to make it even more confusing for the voters in the county, if it does make it on the ballot. We also believe that this proposal is evidence of the fact that there are fatal flaws in 3881, but not, but we also don't think that this solves the problem, but could ultimately make it even worse and more confusing. While I'm here before you this evening too, I'd also like to clear up a matter that was brought to my attention, that maybe there was some confusion as to whether or not Ameristar Casino St. Charles was supportive of or in opposition to 3881 when it was previously submitted. And I want to make it very clear that we were in opposition to 3881, as well as 3884. And I think that I tried to make that very clear to the councilmen in every way that I could. And in fact, Ameristar Casino St. Charles intends to file a lawsuit tomorrow morning challenging both procedurally and legally whether or not that ballot question shall be able to be placed on the ballot for voters. Obviously, time will tell if we and others will win that lawsuit, but whether we do or not, I'm certain that this issue is going to be before you again in the future, if that question is not, doesn't appear on the ballot. So I thought I could take this opportunity just to make certain that you understand the detrimental impact that it could have specifically to our business. I don't think there's any doubt that it will have an impact on other businesses as well, but I can only speak for our industry. The location of our casino is very unique in that we are right across the county line from St. Louis County, which you all know, and there's a very similarly sized casino there, which has a lot of the same amenities, but in a different county. It's our understanding if this bill were, or this ballot question were to pass, we'd be the only casino in the nation that had a local municipality at the city or county level implement that smoking ban on a casino where all other casinos in the state do not play by the same set of rules. We think that the impact would be huge. We think it's tens of millions of dollars annually to our annual revenue. We think it's millions of dollars to the city of St. Charles, as well as the county. But most important, it is hundreds of jobs here in the community. That's why we are so adamantly opposed to it, and I'm hopeful that in the future, maybe we can work towards some compromise, where maybe not everyone gets everything they want, but we can work toward a compromise that allows businesses to reinvest in their businesses without fear of changes in the law in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, that comment was in opposition of Bill 3884. Is there anyone in support of Bill 3884? Is there anyone else to speak in opposition of Bill 3884? If there are no other speakers on that topic, is there another topic that somebody would
My name is Janice Dudebaker. I live in unincorporated St. Charles County in O'Fallon, Missouri. I'm here because McBride Homes wants to build townhomes, like basically across from my backyard. We have a creek that is a natural creek. It's naturally fed. We've already had drainage problems. Went Home Depot built there, and they flooded my house and numerous others up the street. I did go to a meeting in the city of O'Fallon on Thursday and listened to what they had to say. They want to stabilize the creek bed somehow. There is not really a way that we can see that they can do that. Besides the flooding, we're worried about the property values of our properties going down in the neighborhood. I did have other people that wanted to come tonight, but they could not make it. So I'm speaking on behalf of Pebblebrook Subdivision. I did get some pictures taken today of the creek that runs through the middle of my yard and into the back, through the side yard. This one here shows, you can see the fence on it, which is my property line. And within four feet of that, the south side of my, on the south side of the creek, that is where my creek bed starts, and it's already eroding on that side. So I would really appreciate it if they did it stabilize the other side and not stabilize my side, which I don't know how they will be able to do that. This is a picture of the north side of the creek where O'Fallon owns the property, where trees have fallen into the creek. Sorry, there's a slight glare. I was trying to take it at 3:30 this afternoon. There's trees that have fallen into the creek that they will not take care of. We have tried on different occasions to fix it on our side, where we can put it in our yard, we can put the rocks in and try to stabilize it as much as possible. This is one that we started. You can see the stone going down, where we tried to fill in to keep it from eroding on that side. A little further down from this section, we have a spot that is completely eroded. As you can see in the picture, you can see it goes back underneath the land, and you can't, the picture doesn't do it justice, but it goes back four to five feet under, and it's getting ready to cap in. This is a better picture of where we have tried on that one side to fill it in so that we keep it from eroding more. This picture here is in the back, is in my backyard, right against my property line in the back, where we had to get 20 tons of rock to be brought in to fill it in, to keep it from eroding, to eroding my backyard, which I don't have a pro, I understand I bought the property with the creek there. We are in a 500 here floodplain. We are in a 500-year flood plain. We flooded in 2000 when they built Home Depot. I don't want to take the chance that it will happen again. I had, literally, my entire downstairs was under, and they, I had three to four feet of water in my upstairs. So I don't know if there's anything you guys can do to help me, but I would really appreciate it, and a lot of people in our neighborhood would.
And you're not in a city, you're in unincorporated?
We are unincorporated, St. Charles County.
Whose district are you in, do you know?
That I'm not sure. I want to say it's Brazel, maybe, but it could be Paul Wynn. So I'm not sure. I know I probably should have came more prepared, but I was, I didn't know there was a meeting tonight. But it's right behind the Home Depot, off Highway K in Mexico. Where, and to the west of Home Depot is where they want to build the townhomes. The bank and that area down there is too unstable to put anything there, really, and it fills up with water. If we get rain, it's already swampy down there, so I really don't know how they're going to fix it. But I could definitely use some help on trying to get it fought, because O'Fallon, since I'm not, I don't pay their taxes, I'm not in their city, they don't really want to help me.
Sure.
And we have a lot of people, I mean, I have a lot of neighbors that would have tried to come, but they couldn't get babysitters and all that, so, I mean, I'm speaking on behalf of a large section of our neighborhood. When it flooded in 2000, we had like 12 to 13 houses that had water in the basements. There was water up two blocks from where the creek actually is. They did put a tunnel in, a bigger tunnel.
Okay.
I don't know if it will work. I don't want to take the chance that it's not.
Okay. I'm sorry, we are out of time, but email me, or speak with one of the ladies, and find out how you can contact us, and probably your representative is Paul Wynn.
Okay.
But you can email him, and he is very responsive.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else to speak on this topic?
We're also on the agenda for later for Bill 3882. I'm Amanda Stapleton-Clowe. We live in unincorporated St. Charles County. I don't know how these are going to work, because we have to do it on transparency, so let's see. What we're asking to do is, we'd like to put up a fence. We sit on a corner lot. We'd like to put the fence into our side yard, as you can see in the picture, to come up past the bedroom window and our air conditioner, halfway between the street and the house, only a four-foot picketed fence. By the ordinance that we're going against, it says that we can't go past our house line, which is another 15 feet in closer to the house, because the neighbor's next to us faced towards that street. We applied for a variance report first. At that meeting, from what we can gather, the reasons that we were denied was that it formed an inconsistent appearance in the neighborhood, that they're looking for a uniformed distance from the street. But these are the other, these are all four houses that sit on our corner. This is our house, we're asking to be 15 feet away from the street. This is a neighbor across the street, she's already 23 feet away. I don't know if this will help if I put paper underneath it. This is the other corner, they're 30 feet away. This is the other corner, they're 18 feet away. So there's already no consistency, especially on our corner and within our neighborhood either. So that's kind of, why were we denied when there's already not a consistent appearance in the neighborhood anyways? Then, the other reason we gathered that we were denied is because it was an eyesore to the neighbors, and that it shouldn't be the, I think their exact wording was, in a big, open, green space like that in a corner lot, I don't want to see a fence. Well, it's kind of against the ordinance in general, because the ordinance says that as long as the neighbor's behind you don't face towards the street, you can take your fence up until the street line. This fence is completely legal, they abide by all of the ordinance, but it's going 30 feet, well, I think that was the one that went 20, 18 feet from the street into the area. So we were, again, denied for something that's already happening, and we could do, as long as our backdoor neighbor didn't face towards the street. No, we get it. We don't want to cause a problem with our neighbor. That's why we've, we've asked her, we've gone the whole route, we've done all this, we've taken lots of things, lots of pictures. You know, as far as an eyesore goes, that trailer is less than probably four blocks from our house. It's, and it's an, it's an abandoned property that they were doing construction on, and the construction workers left the trailer. I think the neighbors have spray painted it a few times, because it's been graffiti, but it's been there at least five or six years. That's more of an eyesore than a fence, and I don't know who owns it, I don't know why it's there, it's on vacant property. As far as our neighbors go, we took pictures from her yard too. This is a picture from her porch, our direct neighbor behind us. And you wouldn't even be able to see our fence. I have lots of other pictures that show that it doesn't, we have a picture from her driveway, it would obstruct her view for traffic. All those houses that sit on that thing, we got a petition signed from them saying, hey, it's okay with us, go ahead and do what you need to do. We found it interesting that our notice about this report was sent not to any of, it was only sent to one of those six houses. But those are the only six houses really affected by this ordinance. The houses that were, were sent the notice, all sit on the other side of the corner, on the other side of the street, and they are not really affected by the ordinance anyways.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Stapleton-Clowe. I am her husband. Like my wife said, we're, we are about safety. We don't want anything poor to happen in our neighborhood. We want to be cognizant of the people that are around us. Safety was a concern about how far our fence went out, because of the way that our neighbor's house sits on the other side of the street. So we took pictures of other houses in our neighborhood from the driveway, as going to back out for safety reasons, and that is a picture of someone's footage directly by the street, where if you were backing out, you wouldn't be able to see anybody whatsoever. You won't put it underneath. If there was a car, you'd have no idea, because it's right up against the curb, which is obviously a safety concern. There is a ordinance about how your landscape can be, and that there shouldn't be anything hanging below at least seven feet from the street. And again, there's actually a car back there that no one would be able to see because of a failure of ordinances. What we want to do is what some people already have grandfathered in. The picture on top is what our proposed fence would like to be. And then underneath, there are two other houses that have already been grandfathered in because of 2010, everyone else before that would be grandfathered in. And the line of sight protecting people isn't obstructed in any way. We sit on the corner lot that has a four-way stop. People coming up to our intersection are slowing down all the time in the first place. There's no problems having a fence as far out as it is, because you can see clearly up into the intersection, while there's plenty of other houses that have been grandfathered in for whatever reasons, that, I'm sorry, it's... We took a mile radius, looked at our house, and took the mile radius of all the fences that were in a nearby area, north, south, east, west, whatever it came up to be. There are a total of 450 yards. Of those 450 yards, 114 of them have an illegal fence to some degree. It might only have been extending up past our house a foot. Someone went straight towards the street where you couldn't see anything. If you look at all the houses, if you took away some of the houses that don't have fences, some that do, 66% of them, almost 67, are either illegal, or they're legal because the houses face back-to-back. Our house would fit in with the rest of our houses right smack dab in our neighborhood. Again, we understand the concerns about how everyone else's yards are, but our fence would not look any different than everything else that's going on right now. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Kevin, who's, okay, you're in District 7, I see. Okay.
We did have a neighbor that was going to come, and she was unable to last minute because of family emergency. I have the letter that she wrote that she was going to kind of go by. Can I read that on her behalf?
If you would give it to the ladies, they'll make sure that they email them to us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And you wrote a very thorough letter in our packet too, so.
I was hoping that.
We've got it. Is there anyone else to speak on this topic? If not, is there anyone to speak on another topic? Mr. Deanoff.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, and the county council members that are here this evening. A.C. Deanoff, county resident. First thing, a couple of the comments, I just wanted to encourage the county executive. We pay, I believe it's $50,000 to $60,000 to hire a transportation lobbyist to work the halls in Jefferson City. So I'd ask you, Mr. Elman, to make sure that this is his number one top priority, is Highway N, and I think these people have a legitimate concern, and I'd ask that you put that $50,000 to $60,000 on that lobbyist to good use.
Thank you.
The second item that I'd like to address is at Pebblebrook Subdivision. I was at the planning zoning commission meeting last Thursday. Those people really need Mr. Wayne Anthony's help and assistance to fight and be a lot, be an advocate for them. The city council meeting is this Thursday, and these people's homes are at jeopardy of being flooded out for the third and fourth time. There's one woman that won a lawsuit against the city of O'Fallon for $350,000, and I'd ask Mr. Anthony and Mr. Gross, the Director of Administration, to go to bat for this neighborhood in unincorporated county. The comments that I'd like to make, Sheriff Tom Neer made some damaging, malicious, libelous and incorrect facts against my public testimony before the county council meeting two weeks ago on Monday, August 27th of this year, and I would like to comment on that. I only speak the facts and truth when I get up to this podium, and I do my due diligence and my research before opening up my mouth. I'm here to speak my piece and set the official public record straight. Mr. Neer stated in his comments that I said some incorrect facts that were not correct. I believe he said, I made false statements regarding the $1 million conversion from a county sheriff's department to a police department. Let's break down some of the numbers, some of the preliminary numbers that I put together. A police chief's salary, in addition to Mr. Neer's hefty salary and benefits, would be $135,000, plus the police chief benefits would be $40,500. To hire a major, a deputy police chief for field operations, would be $120,000. The major's benefits would be $36,000. To hire a major deputy police chief in charge of the detective and special operations sections would be a $120,000 salary. The major's benefits would be $36,000 in a police department scenario. The assistant to the police chief or administrative assistant would be a $60,000 salary. Assistant benefits would cost $18,000. Three staff executive vehicles underneath the state bid from Mackens Ford, or I believe they don't make Crown Victorias, but the latest Ford Crown Victoria would be $90,000 to the county. To emergency equip these vehicles would be another $25,000. Now, I'd like the sheriff to speak to the cost of the office space. If you go next to our courthouse, our courthouse is bursting at the seams. There's no room for additional staff, and the sheriff claims that he's going to move into the courthouse. The markings and decals on the cars, the uniforms, the badges, the hats, the coats, the sweaters, the rain gear, the business cards, the stationery, the envelopes, the building signs and decals, question after question after question. I ask you to put the county auditor to work and come up with a fiscal note. It still hasn't happened. Our state constitution mandates ballot questions must have a fiscal impact statement and explanation of the fiscal note to taxpayers. Bill 3880 is confusing ballot language, not meeting the mandate of the state constitution with no fiscal note. I'm hereby making a public challenge to Sheriff Neer, that I will publicly debate Mr. Neer on this county charter amendment at three locations spread across our county between October 1st and October 31st, with the general election being held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2012.
Please wrap up.
The sheriff needs to stop being a military operation and share financial information regarding operations of our sheriff's department. It is time to be transparent and open with the public's information. Sheriff Neer, I challenge you to answer emails that several people have requested and request for public information. I also am meeting with an attorney and will be challenging Bills 3879 is not being germane, and Bill 3880 is not being germane, and not meeting the state constitution with a fiscal note. So we'll see what the judge has to say, and I appreciate you hearing my comments. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak this evening? If not, that closes public comment. Next on the agenda is the oral report from the county executive.
Yeah, before the SOS people leave, this is Brazel. She, I thought I saw her. Can you come up? Want to watch this coming up. One other thing I'd add to my previous statement is that, is that last year, I believe, the council, or maybe it was two years ago, we actually purchased land there at Duello Road in Hopewell, and made that intersection a T. It was, it was even worse. I mean, still bad, but it was even worse, so. And we also have, if John Greifstein was here, I'd have him talk about some plans we have to connect those two roads in the future. But again, we can do that, because it's the crossroads. You know, we can work on Hopewell, and we can work on Duello, but, you know, N is the primary responsibility of the state. And I just want you to, if you can, inform the council about Mr. Elmstead and the role that he played in your earlier efforts.
Yes. Gary Elmstead has been a huge help to me and to our SOS project. Gary Elmstead was somebody that was always available for me to talk to. He was somebody who would always return my phone calls, and he would always give me guidance whenever I needed it. So as far as I'm concerned, Gary Elmstead is one of SOS's heroes.
Thank you. I think that's better coming from you than from me.
Thank you. Does that conclude your oral report?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I believe there are several people that would like to leave. We can, we'll be silent for a moment, if you'd like to. Go ahead and clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I take back what I said about being finished?
About what? Being finished? Oh, sure.
I just, I just want to add.
Now that the room's cleared, right?
For the folks at home, in case they, in case they're confused here, Gary Elmstead is the lobbyist that was referred to by the previous speaker.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that is a good point. People at home might not have realized that he is the lobbyist. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Remove the community development section.
Okay. There's a motion to remove community development. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. I would like to make a motion to remove approval of nominations and appointments.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Anything else to be removed? If not, is there a motion to accept the remaining consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Community development, Mr. Doherty.
I have some concerns over one of the properties and the demolition side of it, and I would really not like to go forward with this until I can discuss it with the executive staff.
Who would you like to speak with on this?
I met with community development this week, and one of the attorneys, and I pretty well made the agreement that I wanted to discuss this with the executive himself.
Okay, and is there a time-sensitive issue?
May I ask, Mr. Doherty, a question? Did you want to just talk about that one, or did you want to talk about all of them?
No, I asked for approving all of them.
If we could, we could approve the rest.
We could approve the rest and just.
And just table that, table that one till the next meeting?
Correct.
Would that work for you?
Yes, I'm all in favor of that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine. We just, I just became aware of the issue today. In fact, I talked to Wayne about it.
Right.
Quite a bit already. I've talked to Wayne about it quite a bit already, so...
No, I'm concerned it could be a litigated issue.
Well, then we can go ahead and proceed with the rest would be good, right, Wayne?
Which is the one that you're removing? Which is the one?
We want to remove the property of Lot 69 and 78 at Lakeview Drive, the Herbert property.
Which is listed on your cover sheet as just Lakeview Drive.
So we could approve all the demolition contracts with the other excavators except for which one?
Lot 79 and 68, Lakeview Drive.
Right, I understand that. But what's... What company is it?
McKinney.
Okay. So there's a motion to remove the McKinney trucking and demolition for $30,200. That is your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Or is your motion to approve the others with the exception of that one?
To approve all the demolition contracts.
With the exception of that one.
With the exception of that one. That's my motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we just haven't accepted that, so that's all we have to do on that one.
We'll alter the terms.
Okay. And the issue that I wanted to bring up is the approval of nominations and appointments. Mr. Elman, would you like to speak to the new nominees?
Well, I could. Actually, Gil might be able to tell you more about Ryan Tilly, who's the new solid waste person. Mr. Lieutenant Tiefenbrun, he's been appointed before, is being reappointed to the County Educational Assistance Board. He's been with the department for 23 years. He has responsibilities, including internal affairs investigations, policy review updates, monitoring the application of mobile data terminal and patrol cars. So he's an important part of that department and has done a good job on the educational assistance board. I ask you to reappoint him.
Okay. And Mr. Tilly?
Mr. Tilly is our new director of the Division of Environmental Health and Protection. Stephanie Uy has done a great job for us on the solid waste district board. We put her there. I recommended her several years ago because she... Although she's our fiscal officer, she used to work in the solid waste industry for one of the big hauling companies. But Ryan, at this point, has a strong background in landfills and environmental regulation. And so I asked the county executive if he'd consider appointing Ryan for this term. I think he'll do a great job for us.
This will be a four-year term? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ryan Tilly and Lieutenant David Tiefenbrun.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That concludes the consent agenda. Resolution Number 12-11.
Resolution 12-11, sponsored by council as a whole, a resolution recognizing September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri, whereas the St. Charles chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution has been in existence since 1909 and currently consists of 95 members, and whereas this chapter has a Constitution Week Committee with goals to preserve the past, enhance the present, and invest in the future. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution wish to educate all citizens, especially the youth and newly naturalized citizens, about our founding documents and encourage all in the community to protect and defend the Constitution. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution started a tradition of celebrating Constitution Week many years ago. And whereas in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution conveyed a petition to Congress to dedicate September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. And whereas the U.S. Congress adopted such a resolution and President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed Public Law 915 on August 2nd, 1956, to establish such an observation. And whereas during this time, we remember that the Constitution is a living document that guarantees the freedoms Americans enjoy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council hereby proclaims the week of September 17 through 23, 2012, as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri. Section 2, the St. Charles County Council hereby further asks citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, would you read the title and call the roll?
We do have... Excuse me. Lorna Jones and Winona Landers are here on behalf of this resolution.
Okay. Would you like to come forward? Do you have any comments?
No.
All right.
Resolution 12-11, a resolution recognizing September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Resolution passes, and thank you. Resolution 12-12.
Resolution 12-12, sponsored by council as a whole, a resolution recognizing September 19 as no text-on-board pledge day in St. Charles County, Missouri, whereas St. Charles, Missouri, holds the health and safety of its young adults as a chief concern, and whereas text messaging is the main mode of communication for most American teenagers, with half of all teens sending between 21 and 70 texts a day, and whereas 90% of American teenagers expect a reply to a text message within five minutes, and whereas texting takes one's eyes off the road for an average of five seconds, and whereas in a national survey, 43% of American teenage drivers admitted to texting while driving, even though 97% know it is dangerous. And whereas a recent university study showed those who send text messages while driving are 23 times more likely to crash. And whereas the driver that sends a text message while driving not only jeopardizes his or her safety, but also the safety of passengers, pedestrians, and other drivers. And whereas all residents are encouraged to take the pledge and commit that they will never text and drive at www.itcanwait.com. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council hereby proclaims September 19, 2012, as no text-on-board pledge day in St. Charles County, Missouri.
Any questions or comments?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You might consider amending the first line of the first whereas, since the entire county holds the health and safety of its young adults as a chief concern.
I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's well noted.
It says St. Charles, Missouri, instead of St. Charles County, Missouri.
All right.
But we'll just put that in the record.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, would you read the title and call the roll, please?
A resolution recognizing September 19 as no text-on-board pledge day in St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes. That concludes resolutions. Bills for introduction, Bill Number 3882.
Bill Number 3882, requested by Steve Lowery, sponsored by John White, an ordinance reversing the Board of Zoning Adjustments Decision in Variance 15354.
Questions or comments? Bill 3883, please.
Bill Number 3883, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Nancy Matheny, an ordinance authorizing execution of subrecipient agreements with the city of St. Peters and with Saints Jokuman and Ann Care Service, and further authorizing execution of an agreement with the city of St. Peters for administering St. Charles County's own CDBG programs.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, Bill 3884, please.
Bill Number 3884, requested by Joe Cronin, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance amending Section 1, Point H, and Section 2 of Ordinance 12-063.
Questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I guess it's questions for Joanne. Is this cleanup of that?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
My question also is that it's a different number. How is that going to affect anything? Our previous bill was 3881. Now this is 3884. Is there any reference in the ballot language, in the charter language, that is going to make that confusing?
3881 became 12-063 when it was enacted by the council. So the reference is, of course, now to it in its ordinance form and not in its bill form. And so it's a reference to amending the section. If you remember, the layout of Councilmember Cronin's proposed bill was he opened up with the ordinance that would be in place should the charter amendment pass. Then he laid out what would be in the charter, and then he laid out what was going to the voters. And so the portion, and the council chair, in fact, read it, I believe, to the audience, that he had focused on on that last day in preparing it, the substitute, was on that language. Through an error in my office, my error, I sent him the wrong bill, so it did not have all of the language in the upper sections that had been prepared so that it matched the voters. I saw that on Tuesday, and I contacted him the day after the meeting and asked him if we could go forward with the am mendatory bill. So the bill has been set up simply to fill in that missing language that the voters will vote on on November 6th.
Is there anything out there that would mislead the voters that is in the ballot language or the charter language that is being changed?
I had not previously heard the claim that the language of this bill is not clear. There are no compound questions. I know that there had been questions that we received about one of the bills that has two compound questions for the voters. There are no compound questions in this. They're fairly evenly stated. The ban is in Section 1. The proposed exemptions are in Section 2. That's the only way I can really answer it.
One other question, only because it's a matter of public record. I know we don't talk about lawsuits on the floor, but has the county been served at this point?
The county has not been served. I understand from the attorney who represents the election authority that the election authority was served today.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on Bill 3884? Bill 3885.
Bill Number 3885, requested by Gil Copley, sponsored by Nancy Matheny, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement for financial assistance grant 2012007 between St. Charles County and the St. Louis-Jefferson Solid Waste Management District for receipt of funds in an amount up to $20,000.
Are there any questions or comments on this bill? Moving on to Bill 3886.
Bill Number 3886, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Nancy Matheny, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri, for the year 2012. Be it ordained by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, that there is hereby levied on all property in the county of St. Charles, state of Missouri, subject to ad valorem taxation made taxable by law for state purposes on the assessment and valuation thereof, heretofore made and established. Taxes for the year 2012 at the rates respectfully to and for the various funds and purposes as follows to wit. A, for the general fund of St. Charles, for the general fund of said county, being for ordinary purposes, the rate is fixed at 16 hundredths cent on each $100 of assessed valuation. B, for the road and bridge fund of said county, the rate is fixed at 20 and 25 hundredths cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. C, for the dispatch and alarm fund of said county, the rate is fixed at 3 and 9 tenths cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Thank you. And I understand that this is a no-tax-increase bill. Is this correct? Is this bringing forth the same rates?
The administration, since we copied it from last year's bill verbatim, except we changed the years of the...
I knew the .16 cents had been unchanged. I wasn't sure about the others. Are there any questions or comments on this bill?
I'm curious.
Yes, Mr. Doherty?
.16, what would it generate?
About 20 bucks. No, it's a little bit more than that, but not much.
A whole case of peanuts.
The point the administration is making is that our taxes to the county is worth a bag of peanuts. It's only about 60 cents, average 60 cents per resident in this county.
And it is unbelievably low compared to any other taxing jurisdiction on our... And maybe someday, the administration will make a recommendation to increase that. Maybe not. Any other items to be discussed? Announcements miscellaneous? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We're adjourned.